I'd like to call the St. James Parish School Board meeting to order. Open of meeting, prayer by Sue Byer, pledge of allegiance by Raymond Grove.
In the name of the Father, and the Son, and Holy Spirit, amen. Loving God, as we begin this meeting, we ask for your guidance and wisdom. Help us to work together in harmony and purpose. Grant us clarity, thought, and unity of mind, so that our decisions may reflect your will and contribute to the greater good of all involved. Bless our discussions and efforts with your grace, amen.
Amen.
I beg to defy of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
C, roll call, Superintendent Chris Simonton.
Mr. Grove, here. Ms. Byer.
Here.
Ms. Cantillier, here. Ms. Washington.
Here.
Ms. Cantella.
Here.
Mr. Pochette. President Florin.
Here.
B, discussion and approval of meeting minutes from February 11, 2025. Moved by Raymond Grove, second by Raymond Cantella. All in favor?
Aye.
Number two, committee meeting reports. A, executive committee report of March 10, 2025, Chairperson Nicole Flora. The St. James Parish School Board Executive Committee met in the school board meeting room on Monday, March 10, at 4:30 PM. Members present, Nicole Flora, Angela Washington. Members absent, Marty Pochette. Purpose, to review the tentative agenda and set the agenda for the March 11, 2025 school board meeting. Recommendations, motion by Nicole Flora, second by Angela Washington, and unanimously carried to approve the agenda for the March 11, 2025 school board meeting. There was motion by Angela Washington, second by Nicole Flora, that the meeting be adjourned at 4:45 PM. B, building committee report of March 10, 2025, Chairperson Tim Cantillier.
We met yesterday, Monday, March 11, in the school board meeting room at 5:15. Members present, Raymond Grove, Tim Cantillier. Members absent was Marty Pochette. Our purpose was threefold, and we have these recommendations. Motion by Raymond Grove, second by Tim Cantillier, and unanimously carried to hire Providence Engineering and move forward with the Lucha High School Drainage Project Phase Two. Of second one, motion by Raymond, second by Tim Cantillier, and unanimously carried to hire Thompson, Luke, and Associates to move forward with the school food service freezer cooler project. And third, once again, motion by Raymond, second by myself, and unanimously carried to move forward with the Lucha High School visitors, football, bathroom, building renovation and mental roof. And if we adjourn that, motion by Raymond, second by myself, and the meeting adjourned at 5:15.
Need a motion to accept. Moved by Raymond Grove, second by Sue Byer. All in favor?
Aye.
Number three, recognitions. A, recognition of employees of the year, Kelly Cook.
Good evening, everyone. I am pleased to recognize our employees of the year who were not able to join us at our February board meeting. So go ahead and get started. First up, we have Ms. Tina Babbitt. She is our Teacher of the Year for the Career in College Center. Next up, we have Ms. Holly Warren. She's Teacher of the Year for the high school, St. James High. Our next honoring tonight is Ms. Laverne Armott. She is the Support Person of the Year for Gramercy Elementary. Next up, we have Ms. April Brown. She is the Health Employee of the Year from Vashry Elementary. And also, we have Mr. Corey Boujouat. He is the Health Employee of the Year from Gramercy Elementary. That's it, thank you. Come back up and take a group photo.
Get everybody to come up and take one group.
B, recognition of spelling bee winners, Ms. Beatrice Long.
Everybody can see you do. You gotta be in the limelight.
Good evening, everyone. This year, we had a number, a total number of seventy-four students to sign up for the spelling bee. And they all were wonderful, they were very competitive. On the first, on the elementary level, grades one through six participated. And on the high school level, there were two divisions, grades seven through ninth and tenth through twelve. So tonight, we're here to honor the first place winners. When I call your name, please come up. First grade, from Vashry Elementary, Jackson Spears.
Come stand by me.
You'll come back in a little bit.
Second grade, from Paulina Elementary, Harley Albert. Third grade, Paulina Elementary, Riley Williams. Next, fourth grade, Gramercy Elementary, Evan McClung. Next, fifth grade, from Gramercy Elementary, Madison Scola. From sixth grade, also, Gramercy Elementary, Trinity Duplessis. Okay, high school level, grades seven through ninth, Kason Payne. Grades seven through twelve, St. James High, Iran Hickerson.
The next parish president.
C, recognition of thanks to OxyChem for the LED lighting at Vashry Elementary in the C3, Ashley Muggs.
I'd like to call up the representatives from Oxy. We have quite a few here. I'd let them come introduce themselves and speak a little bit. But we just want to, once again, show our sincere gratitude to OxyChem for this LED lighting project that they started a couple of years back. We're on school number five at this point, Vashry in C3. They donated a total of forty-nine thousand, six hundred dollars. And between all five projects, we're a little over two-hundred-and-eight-thousand dollars that Oxy has put into the budget.
I'll introduce real quick. Y'all come on up here. So thanks for the recognition, School Board. We really appreciate the recognition. You know, we're proud to be able to participate the way we have been. We've been doing this since 2022, want to continue doing it. As Ashley said, I think it's over two-hundred-thousand dollars in the last, say, three years. So we're just wrapping up the schools. We donated far in 2024, we're kind of finishing them up now, which is great. So really, a great program. I'll introduce some of our folks. So Nicole is our administrative admin, helps me a great deal. Peyton Chasson is our workforce development manager. Misty Bonfanti is our HR manager. And this big gentleman here is Aaron Jones. Aaron is from our corporate office in our sustainability group, sustainability manager. Aaron helps me get the funding from our corporate office, so he's a big part of it. Appreciate the recognition, and we want to continue, so thank you.
Yeah, I'd be remiss if I didn't share. I was, I've been superintendent here over, a little over two years now, and I can tell you, I was on the job maybe three days when Mr. Steve called wanting to meet with me. And I was like, man, he didn't give me a chance to get in the office. Chomping at the bit, right? But I appreciate that, and I appreciate you reaching out on behalf of OxyChem doing that. And we met that week.
Yep.
And it's been a great relationship since, so I do appreciate you doing that.
And Ashley, y'all have done a great job. Mr. Earl, everybody helping us do the, work through the process, doing the studies, and then getting it from us, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
I think this is from last year, the amount, we're all different amounts, so.
This is okay. We really recognize you.
Now we're going to circle back to the recognitions. We have somebody that just came in.
My pleasure to introduce to you Ms. Connie Lewis. She's our District Support Person of the Year for the district. Have the security technicians here at St. James High. Connie.
Anytime, anytime I come to St. James High School, she hollers at me to come in the cafeteria and tell me to make sure I eat. So I appreciate it so much.
I'm very so proud of this because at the end of the day, I love St. James, and I have a son that was supposed to graduate, but he got killed in an accident. So the kids recognize me, and when I, they don't see me, they look for me. So what I give them, I give them pure love, a love that's unconditional. And I think that's important with the help of the staff, the principal, and assistant principal. We just a small pork, but I like my small pork.
You got a big pork. I'm gonna come eat tomorrow.
You got another one?
B, recognition of thanks to Winn Dixie for donation of water during a winter storm, Kelly Cook.
Over, as you know, we dealt with a snowstorm in South Louisiana. And our parish was under a ball water advisory for many days, and we couldn't have came back to school without fresh water for our kids to drink. And Winn Dixie stepped up to the plate to help us out a lot, and that doesn't go unrecognized, and we appreciate their partnership with us. And look, all we had to do is pick up a phone and call, and they were, they were on the spot with it. So we definitely appreciate Winn Dixie and what they've done during that time, so we wanted to recognize them.
E, recognition of thanks to Mosaic for their donation to Sixmore to fund Capturing Kids' Hearts, Ms. Avery and Simone Labatt.
All right, good evening, everyone. As Principal of Sixmore Elementary School, I'm here to recognize and thank Mosaic for their generous donation to our school to help fund our Capturing Kids' Hearts program. I had reached out to Mr. Brandon Keller over the summer to see if they would partner with us so we can continue utilizing the program at Sixmore Elementary School. So he came on over and met with me. I explained to him what the program was all about, and so he, he was ready and willing to, you know, help us fund the program. So I want to thank you all for your generous donation of twenty-five thousand dollars to help us fund our program for the next two years.
I'm Ron Yusurik, I'm the general manager for Mosaic's Louisiana operations, and I mean, we couldn't be happier to support St. James Schools, this program, our educators. We've been operating in St. James Parish for over fifty-five years. Many of our employees have come through the St. James School system, right? Generations, actually, have come through St. James School system, so we're part of it.
Ron took it off. Just happy to do my part, and we appreciate the partnership between Mosaic and the school district. You guys help us by training and educating the future generation who will one day walk through the doors of Mosaic. So without that partnership and that pipeline with the talent, we wouldn't be able to do what we do, so we appreciate what you do to make it all possible.
Yeah, and let me just say, same. These guys, when I, they met with me on, from day one, and we have been on this journey, and they were on this journey prior to me getting here, and we continue that relationship. And they were very generous to, to our school system. When we talk about business and industry, right, in the partnerships, we are very blessed in St. James Parish to be able to have industry that is so giving. And so we appreciate you guys and what you do for us.
It's a partnership.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Four, business finance instruction. A, update on the safety initiatives of St. James Parish schools. This aligns with priority three of the Board Strategic Action Plan, Dustin Jenkins.
Good evening. I'm here today to give you all an update on the safety and security initiatives, pretty much district-wide throughout the school district. At the beginning of January, we officially moved forward with implementing the standard response protocol, which is offered through that loving God's foundation. I think I, most of y'all remember, I came and spoke about that foundation and what they could offer us. The school staffs have been busy making minor adjustments to all of individual school emergency plans, just to update the verbiage and create a more uniform approach to our safety initiatives across the district campuses. Additionally, most staff have either received or established their own form of identification card stickers. So on the back of all of their identification cards, they're walking around with the initiatives that all of the district went through. Our custodial staffs have also been trained on these new directives to ensure they prepare for the same emergencies. Copies of the protocols have been provided to the emergency personnel in the parish for quick response when responding to incidents at our school sites. As of February 2025, all campuses serving high schools have received the CEIA Open Gate Weapons Detection Systems that I came to y'all a couple of months ago about. Personnel have been trained, they are trained on the best practices for safe and effective use. I've been on site for multiple operations of these, and the staff and students are getting more used to the operation of these devices, and it's becoming a daily operation for the schools. In collaboration with Ghostelle, we have installed Stop the Bleed Kits in most of our schools near the AED systems, as well as an additional AED unit has been installed at LHS. All AEDs will be inspected in the coming weeks to inventory the materials and check for upcoming expiration dates. Updated Narcan doses, we had brought to y'all last month, to let y'all know that we got updated Narcan doses in all of our campuses with expiration date of 2026. Rukata Door Access Rita Project is well underway. That's another initiative that's going to help us with the safety of keeping doors locked and maintaining security in our schools. After a couple of minor setbacks, as of tomorrow, I'll be rolling out the new Rave notification system as a panic button. This is funded by the Department of Education, so it comes at no cost to the school board, and this is going to allow quick notifications to all campus personnel in the event of an emergency, as well as directly notifying all of our law enforcement and emergency responders. Just a few hours ago, I received an email that the project we were working with St. James Parish Sheriff's Office, I think we came to y'all to let y'all know about a MOU that we entered with them in reference to BearCom coming in and doing bidirectional antennas in our high schools.
Honest about everything, it's almost, I was reminded of a baby. When a baby cries, you don't know why they're crying, but we all give it the same, either a noonie or the bottle. But there's a reason why that baby is crying. The kids shared they were so open, you would not have believed their needs, and I'm not going to get into specific details, but I was blown away. Y'all, by the end of the session, I told the kids, I'm like, I'm on a high. But it was a different kind of high because I was like, one little boy came to me and he said, I'm finally getting what I need. And y'all, that was one day, and that was just a taste of what they would actually get.
And which is the second part, the licensed addiction counselor comes in and meets with our students who are there because of, you know, possession of whatever type of substance that they did bring in to the school. So that is the second part of what they're going to be getting from March to April to May to finish off the school year. This is going to be at a cost of nine thousand dollars, and Melissa, Ms. Melissa definitely have the funds through a grant, through.
United Way.
United Way. So we just asking for your approval for this tonight.
Ms. Diana, second by Angela Washington. All in favor?
I'd like to make a comment. You're unbelievable.
That's what they tell me.
I truly believe that God puts a special person in a special place, and it's you. You are blessing to these kids of ours that desperately need that help. And when you say that one child, it gets, I'm getting too emotional, but I heard, I never made it to public there. Thank you.
And I would like to add one thing. It's just not that the program's just going to be beneficial to our kids, but also to our community. We've had several, I was sharing with Ms. Angela that several, several of my CAP members, some industry managers that reached out because it's going to actually help them. A lot of times, they get knocked because they don't hire enough people from our community, but a lot of them cannot pass drug tests. So now we're getting our kids prepared where, once they leave our school system, we want a hundred percent of our kids to be able to test clean.
C, discussion and approval of the following certificates of payment. This item aligns with priority three of the Board Strategic Action Plan, Ashley Lewis.
Good afternoon. But for you tonight, I have one payout request and approval. It's for Star Services of Baton Rouge for the see-through channel replacement. This is the final retainage payment to finish out that project. We received a clear lien and everything to close out the project, so this is the final payment in the amount of nine thousand, four hundred and forty-five dollars and fifteen cents. So we're asking for approval for that tonight.
Tim Cantillier, second by Sue Byer. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
B, discussion and approval of an amendment with Riley Consulting LLC. This item aligns with priority four of the Strategic Action Plan.
Good evening, Board. I come before you this evening to ask your approval for an amended contract with Riley Consulting LLC. Julie Riley is a board certified behavioral analyst that's providing behavioral consultation to students in our district. Of course, we had a contract that was about, I think, forty-five thousand, but because of the need, so many students with autism and related disabilities, we would like to increase that contract so that she can continue providing services until the end of the school year. So asking for your approval for the amended contract that would allow for more services to be provided to students at SLA, Paulina Elementary School, and Vashry Elementary School.
That's why the little guy was hollering, Riley?
Ms. Cynthia, can you share where the funding for this is coming from?
Yeah, so the funding will be coming from our IDA funds, federal funds that we have. So hopefully those funds are good, it will not be cut in the future, because they're So, hopefully, those funds are good and will not be cut in the future, because definitely there are needs. Our students with disabilities have needs that we need to make sure we have funding to cover. And next year, I hope it's to increase that contract, provide coaching sessions to our teachers at these schools. At a cost, it could be approximately about seventy-five thousand dollars, but those services are warranted for our students with autism and related disabilities.
Appreciate it.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. E, discussion and approval of St. James Parish Head Start Continuation Application and Budget Justification Narrative, twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six, including self-assessment and school improvement. This item aligns with priority three of the Board Strategic Action Plan, Ms. Mary Van.
Good evening, um, I'm here once again to get approval for our twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six application for Head Start. Um, and included in our application, we have our self-assessment, where all the managers, all the, uh, different areas at Head Start, uh, Ms. Kelsey, our ed- uh, health manager, Ms. Diana, our enemy service coordinator, and Ms. Lauren, our education manager. We all, uh, have a little meeting, just look at our reports, look at the data, decide what can we improve, and then we take that self-assessment and work on a school improvement plan, which we have attached. And inside of the grant, we're still servicing a hundred-and-fifty-six, three euros, well, a hundred-and-fifty-six children. Some we have a dual enrollment class at SLA, um, but we foresee that as to stay the same for next year. Um, but that all depends on getting children out for the roundup, which is Friday. So, please tell everyone, Public Relations Building, nine to two.
Uh, need a motion, Coach Tim, second by Angela Washington, all in favor?
Aye.
Good job, Ms. Mary Van, appreciate you.
I'll be our support. If you start them young, we can bridge.
Announce when you're doing your, uh, roundup.
Roundup is Friday.
Friday.
This Friday, March fourteenth, at the Public Relations Building from nine to two. So, we need everybody to come out and apply. We encourage, um, and when y'all have opportunity, y'all need to come to our classes to see our debate. It's their precious, they heal your heart up. Thank y'all.
Thank you. F, to consider entering into executive session for discussion of the job achievements and performance of Superintendent Chris Campbell according to LAERS forty-two seventeen K one. Move by Raymond Grove, second by Diana Concello, all in favor? Come back in the open session. Move by Coach Tim, second by Ms. Diana.
And Madam President, uh, based on the evaluation of the superintendent, uh, we need a motion to amend the superintendent's employment contract. Uh, that amendment will deal with terms and qualifications, compensation and expenses, vacations, holidays, and sick leave, and the benefits vesting language. Uh, just need a motion, a second to that effect.
Motion by Coach Tim de Tiere, second by Diana Concello, all in favor?
Aye.
Five, closing of meeting, condolences from Ms. Willamina Landry, uh, retired teacher from Fifth Ward Elementary School, and Ms. Melise Smilek.
Yes.
A retired bus driver and grandmother of Monica Russell, nurse, and Haley Fochet, teacher, and Jai Stein, son of former parent Beverly Stein. I need a motion for German, Raymond Grove, second by Angela Washington, all in favor?